All right. Good afternoon and welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee meeting. I want to ask that agencies and committee members keep their cameras on unless there's some extenuating circumstances, just to provide transparency. This afternoon, we will have a few hearings. We're going to start off with Bill 21-0030, Coordinated Multi-Agency Code Inspections. For the purpose of requiring the city administrator coordinate a multi-agency code inspection after a commercial property has been issued certain environmental citations. Requiring that the city administrator and the Department of Housing and Community Development receive a copy of all environmental citations issued, specifying which agencies must be included in the multi-agency inspection team. Requiring that the city administrator provide certain information to council members. Requiring that the city administrator submit an annual report detailing the work of the multi-agency inspection team and providing for a special effective date. This bill was introduced on January 25th, 2021, and it was sponsored by Councilmember Chris Burnett. I want to turn over to the sponsor, Councilmember Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. Is my connection coming in okay?
You're good.
Perfect. All right. Thank you again. So we had, I know we had a hearing on this sometime in the spring. It's been a while since we talked about it. But I think you did a good job framing it. This is calling for a coordinated response for commercial code violations. And after a few, obviously the hearing in the spring, following that hearing, I had several follow-up meetings with the city administrator's office, with Zaff from Department of Housing and Community Development Finance, to get their feedback on the bill and to try and work out a way to move forward. And so if you want, Mr. Chair, I can just walk through the amendments unless there's additional agency feedback on this. But we did work out agreement on a way to basically scale back the the requirement for a multi-agency response to some more limited circumstances as well as my understanding, maybe the administrator's office can talk about some of the work they're doing internally. But if you don't, I can, I can hold off on going through the amendments, but that's just for the bill. I don't know how you want me to proceed on that.
Sure, Councilmember Burnett, what I think we can do is we can pull the amendments up. We can talk through them one by one. And you were able to share the amendments with the agencies in advance, or rather, the committee was, I believe.
The committee, the committee has it. I did send it to the city administrator's office and the government relations staff in both the mayor and the council president's office. I didn't send it directly to the agencies. But my understanding is that folks were good. Well, that, and my assumption is that it did circulate before they responded to me. So.
Let's go through it.
Perfect. So the amendment number one is basically removing the required multi-agency response and essentially is giving the administrator the authority to direct that response if deemed necessary. This was a amendment that was requested by both the city administrator's office and Department of Housing and Community Development. There were concerns about the increased capacity challenges if they were to respond to as much as an additional 800 through a one calls per year. I think that's an accurate number as well as, you know, administrative concerns about just being able to process all of that information. So this just gives, it gives them a flexibility to the city administrator's office to do it. So basically, instead of saying required to respond, they have the ability to respond or encourage to respond essentially. Amendment number two is that was at the request of the Environmental Control Board. They raised concerns in our last hearing and in their agency report about their role as the adjudicating body for citations. The, for citations and then also being asked to be a part of a investigatory response. They felt like it was a conflict of interest and asked that the bill be moved out of the Article 40 and placed elsewhere in the city into the code so that they would not be a part of the multi-agency response. Because if there's a, as you all know, if someone challenges a citation, they would go to the Environmental Control Board. So they just felt like they were playing both sides potentially if there's nowhere to pass is written. Amendment number three. My list is a little bit, so this. Can you scroll down? Sorry, because my notes don't align with the order of the amendments.
Councilmember Burnett, was the amendment you just described, is that still number two?
Yeah, that's number two. Sorry, I'm trying to pull the bill up here. All right, let me jump to. So yeah, that number four is, sorry, my computer is also bugging out. Give me one second. All right. Oh, okay. You made it full screen. Okay. I was like, wait, something's happening here. I'm sorry, y'all. I guess that my notes aren't aligning with each one of these. All right, so. Let me pull up what you have. I'm sorry, give me one second.
Sure. What I'll do in the meantime, I forgot to acknowledge folks in the meeting. We jumped right into, right into business and I failed to do so. I'll just, someone to acknowledge, we of course have you, Councilman Burnett, Councilman Cohen, and Councilman Ramos at the meeting at the moment. And I see Councilman Glover also in the meeting. No other members from the, no other additional council members in the meeting. Do we have Nikki Thompson from the Office of the President?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Nikki. Matt Stegman. And Erin DeGraff, right? All right, and then from the mayor's office, do we have Natasha Meehu?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And Nina Demelis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Awesome. Thanks. All right, you can continue on, Councilmember Burnett.
Okay. All right, so let me. All right, so I'll jump to number four until I get my notes correct. Number three. The, so number three is is basically removing, basically making the bill a reporting bill. So we expanded out the the required reporting. And so I can go through each of these recommendations. So the first was the number of multi-agency inspections conducted, the number of and type of violations as a result of multi-agency inspections. The recommendations from the agency, so any legislative or administrative enhancements to improve community quality of life, multi-agency cooperation. The, we're asking for a report to include the number of inspections conducted, broken down by city council district. The, and then we're asking for an agency level breakdown on the amount of time between the initial complaint requested by the 301 caller and/or the council office, whoever reported it, and the first inspection, the types of citations issued, the number of re-inspections conducted within time allotted, and then the outcome. So just sort of larger data around the number of complaints that resulted in a citation, the number of violation notices issued, how many violations were abated within the time allotted, and the number of outstanding citations and violations for the quarter. It also creates a reporting timeline to the council for that report to be done quarterly. And so with the idea being that the council would be kept abreast on the progress of this should the bill pass. There is also the addition of a sunset provision, which is amendment number five. This, the sunset was essentially, the intention of that was to bring the council back to the table. So essentially, in all of these conversations, it was deemed that, you know, there are internal work groups and efforts being coordinated by the city administrator's office to better coordinate their response to these sort of ongoing issues of commercial properties, corner stores, you know, among others, that are not, you know, are repeated neighborhood nuisances. And, you know, it was acknowledged that this is absolutely an issue that needs to be addressed in a more coordinated fashion and in many ways is with the Social Club Task Force. So what we were basically trying to do is turn this into a a reporting, a reporting bill and you know, and better coordinate moving forward. The, and to go back to number three. I got it together. My apologies. I know I'm a little all over the place, Mr. Chair. Amendment number three is basically removing the city administrator, again, as the required coordinator, though our understanding is that they will continue to serve this role as a part of their normal duties. I know that was a little bit confusing, y'all. I'm happy to take questions on any of this from colleagues.
Before we go to agencies, I want to open up for any clarifying questions from members on the committee. Councilman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Councilman, for working so hard on this bill for so long. So I know you want to see the end of it. And it's definitely relevant. I've got a specific situation in my district that this could really help. So I really appreciate that you're doing this. The agency specified in the original bill is the Fire Department, Health, Housing, and Public Works. It doesn't look like the amendments do anything to that list of of departments. So first, I just want to confirm that. And second of all, I don't recall, and you'll have to forgive me, if at the last hearing, we talked about the police being as one of these agencies that are in here. I guess they're not in here because we can't tell them what to do. So that's basically it. Okay. And, but I think we did in the last hearing have commitment from the police to actually participate.
Yeah. So they are essentially, what we were told is, you know, they are, the police and the liquor board are on the Social Club Task Force already. And so they would continue to operate in that way as a part of that sort of larger, already existing multi-agency effort. And to your first question, yeah, we didn't, other than taking out Environmental Control Board, I forgot to mention, DBW should be removed. CAO as well, as in the mandate. So my apologies. So yeah, DBW did not have enforcement capabilities. And so they were, they requested to be taken out as well. I'm glad you raised that point because I forgot, forgot that in my notes. Sorry. I got like, as you can see, four of these bills today, so.
I know you, you got overloaded today. Okay. So I just want to make sure that, that that's correct in the amendments, but it looks like it. So.
Yeah, DBW didn't, they don't have an enforcement arm, so they didn't feel it was appropriate.
They don't, they don't do code enforcement. So, yeah. Although they do are part of the solution to whatever happens if there's a legal dumping or whatever in the back. But you're specifically talking about just code enforcement here. Yeah. Yeah. Okay, just those clarifying questions. Thank you very much.
No problem. And again, sorry, y'all, I'm a little scattered, a lot of moving parts today.
All good. Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos and Councilmember Burnett. Any other questions from the committee before we move on to agency reports?
Mr. Chair, just acknowledging that the Councilman Costello is on.
Thank you. I want to acknowledge Councilman Costello has entered the meeting. All right, we're going to move on to agency reports, and we're going to start off with the Fire Department.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Fire Department stands by their report on Council Bill 21-0030.
Thank you. And the Department of Public Works?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Marcia Collins, representing, excuse me, the Department of Public Works. We did request in our bill report and at the hearing that we be removed because we do not have enforcement capabilities. I also want to confirm that we did have the opportunity to see all of the amendments that the sponsor shared today. And I appreciated that fact. So I want to thank you for that, Councilwoman Burnett. And I checked, and yes, we are removed from the legislation. So we are fine as, as the proposed amendments are. Thank you.
Thank you, Marcia. Next, we've got the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing and Community Development. I'm joined here today by Jason Hassler, Deputy Commissioner of Permits and Litigation. As we expressed at the last hearing, DHCD is committed to the cleanliness and appropriate maintenance of all city property, of all property in the city of Baltimore in order to promote health and safety of our communities. DHCD currently coordinates with partner agencies on a reoccurring and on an as-needed basis. I heard you mention the Social Club Task Force. At the previous hearing, DHCD recommended amendment and provided a letter of information outlining some of our operational and fiscal concerns around the implementation of this legislation. So we stand by here today to answer any questions and in deference to the city administrator and Deputy Commissioner Hessler, if there's anything that you wanted to add at this time, please feel free.
I know, but stand by Stephanie's comments. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Next up, we've got the Department of Finance.
Hi, good afternoon. Bob Sennemy, Budget Director, reporting for the Department of Finance. So in our original bill report, our concern was around the potential additional resources that would be needed to implement the legislation. We had estimated at the time about a $700,000 cost for the additional investigators. You know, with the amendments that we saw today, you know, taking DPW out and also giving the city administrator more flexibility rather than requiring to respond to these needs. We feel like that meets our, you know, meets what we were intending to do, which we didn't want to just create additional resources and giving the administrator the flexibility to respond. We feel like we can do that within existing resources now with this bill. So we don't have any further comment beyond that.
Excellent. Thank you, Bob. Next up, we've got the Law Department.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. This is Vic Turbler from the Law Department. We didn't see the amendments. The description that was provided just a moment ago didn't seem to suggest that we'd have a legal issue, but it probably be best if we did see it. Otherwise, well, we probably should see it. And that's where we go with that.
Well, we'll make sure to send those over to you right now, Vic. We're going to send them over right now. Next up, we've got the Department of Health.
Hi, good afternoon, Mr. Chair. This is Justice Speaker, Assistant Commissioner for Baltimore City Health Department. The Health Department stands by our original report. We do expect that there will be an inspector, our workload will increase. So that's all in our original report as well.
Thank you. Next up, I've got the Baltimore City Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and honorable council members for inviting me to speak, to speak today. I want to first thank Councilman Burnett for his leadership on this issue. As you all know, we live in a city with too many nuisance properties that impact the safety, health, and quality of life for our residents and, and our neighborhood. We know that these blighted properties, if left unabated, not only drain resources from multiple agencies, but more importantly, impact the trust that our residents have in our government's effectiveness. In our last meeting on this issue, we committed to developing an approach to inter-agency coordination that utilizes data to prioritize the most egregious and persistent examples of nuisance properties. Today, I am proud to say that in partnership with the councilmen, Housing and Community Development, Fire, Health, and our Chief Data Officer, this administration has worked towards developing a data-driven framework for multi-agency inspections. We will be identifying properties that have had multiple 311 and code violations in the last three months that have had more than one phone number or email report. Based on preliminary information, we believe that there are a few hundred nuisance properties that have received multiple calls for service from several community members. These properties alone have accounted for over 2,000 service requests in the past six months. Our process is designed to focus on those types of chronic nuisance properties and prioritize them for enforcement actions such as abatement, citation, and fines. We have also developed a matrix to designate an agency as the primary responder and designated others as secondary or supporting so that we can establish accountability across agencies. I want to thank the Deputy City Administrator, Daniel Ramos, the Social Club Task Force, and other city leaders for working together to brainstorm and develop this coordinated approach of dealing with nuisance properties. Working with individual agencies, we have developed a set of criteria to create prioritization, a prioritization system for our city employees to respond. My office will be convening and leading weekly meetings with the requisite agencies. At these meetings, we will review properties that make it to the top of our list and assign appropriate agencies for site visits within the following week. We will also review the outcomes of the site visits from the prior weeks and work collaboratively across agencies to bring these properties into compliance. On a parallel track, we are developing a process for elected officials and community leaders to flag properties in their districts and get the same coordinated approach. With that said, I am happy to, as other agency representatives have said, take other, take your questions or provide additional information. Thank you.
Thank you, Minister Schutzer. Appreciate the thoughtful approach to addressing this issue. I know Councilman Burnett has been working really hard on making sure that we're more thoughtful in our approach, and it seems like you're being thoughtful here. Next up, we've got the Environmental Control Board. Rebecca, we're having some trouble hearing you. You just sound far away. It's a little bit better. No, we still can't hear you. No. Bear with us, folks. I think Ms. Woods is calling in.
Just in the interest of time, Mr. Chair, Rebecca gets set up. I believe ECB was going to stand by their report and appreciate that the council has worked with, worked with us to get them written out of this, of the current bill so that they stay in their role as the, as more of an oversight and diversion as opposed to enforcement. Did I say that right, Rebecca?
Right. And was that addressed in the amendments?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Excellent. Thank you. I want to circle back to Victor in the Law Department. I'm not sure, Victor, if you've had a chance to do an appropriate review of the amendments as proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Everything looks in order there. So we are, the Law Department is prepared to approve the bill for permanent legal sufficiency as amended.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. With that, any other questions from folks on the committee before we decide to take a vote? See, no questions. I'll entertain a motion.
Move the amendments.
Second.
So amendments moved by Ramos and second by Burnett. Conway, yes. Burnett?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Costello? Councilman Costello? I'll come back to Councilman Costello.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I'm a yes.
Oh, excellent. Thank you. Councilman Glover?
Yes.
Councilman Porter is absent, excuse absence, and Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes, yes.
All right, the amendments will pass. And is there a motion to move the bill?
It's a bill favorable.
Excellent. Moved by Ramos. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Burnett. Conway, yes. Burnett?
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Costello?
Yes.
Glover?
Yes.
Porter's absent and Ramos.
Yes.
Excellent. This bill was favorably and will be heard at the, for second reader at the next council hearing. All right. We're going to move right on to Bill 21-0088, Study and Report Integrated Services Model. For the purposes of requiring that the mayor's office of children and family success in consultation with partner agencies and organization submit a report to the mayor and city council regarding the adjustment of the service delivery system so that when families enter one part of the system, they can access all parts of the system, including older adult services and the homeowner's tax credit and providing for a special effective date. This bill was introduced on May 17th, 2021, and sponsored by Councilmember Odette Ramos. I'll open the floor to comments from the sponsor. Councilman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. This bill comes from my work in the past, but also the work that we've done in the tax sales space this year. There is a model called the Two Generation Approach to Service Delivery that is being done in four counties here in Maryland and growing. Baltimore's Promise is a similar model, and it's also happening in other states and cities around the country. So I'll give you an example of how this could, this came about. I have a constituent who is in her late 80s, I would say. I have a constituent who is in her late 80s, I would say, who forgot to pay her taxes. And she takes care of her granddaughter, who has a developmental disability, and also her son, who also has a developmental disability. It makes sense that if the son and the granddaughter are getting services, that everybody in the family also gets a, gets assessed for what other things they may be eligible for. In this case, the, my constituent was eligible for the homeowner's tax credit, and still is. And so that, again, when one person enters a system of service delivery, that the whole family gets assessed, and all of those benefits and other programs can be available for that family, and to the extent possible, they can be enrolled in those programs. This takes data sharing, this takes technology, this takes coordination. But it makes sense so that when, again, somebody's coming in for rental assistance or energy assistance, food stamps, anything we can possibly think of where folks are asking for aid, for help, they're also getting examined for everything else that they're eligible for, and not just that person, but the entire family. And that moves from a service delivery model to a human development model. So this bill is basically trying to say, let's think about this for Baltimore, and how would it work? So that we would have the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success sort of leading the effort of getting the report and all the partners together and coming up with what this might look like. I don't pretend to say that this is gonna, this new system would happen in a couple of years. It's a very long-term thing, but it is something that is needed. And so this is the beginning of the conversation. Many of you have already read the Law Department's report that says that the council cannot pass legislation about what any of the mayor's offices can do. We could do this in a resolution, or we could assign a new agency to try to head this up. So we're not going to vote on this today. We wanted to start the conversation while I look for either a new agency to head it up or find a different method, but I did not think that doing a series of hearings would get what we need for the beginning of this conversation. So I've approached Housing and Health. We need to have further discussions. And, but we have talked with the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Services that are success that, you know, acknowledges the importance of this work. We just, as the council, can't tell them what to do. So that's the essence of the, of the bill. It is a different approach than a one-stop, right? A lot of times we think, well, let's just have a one place for people to go, and they can get everything. That's not the reality in Baltimore, where we have, you know, lack of transportation and that sort of thing. And the model in other jurisdictions is based on the community action partnerships, but in other states, it's actually in every, you know, other service provider. So we're looking at partnerships with nonprofits, we're looking at agency coordination to make sure that all families get all the things that they're, that they are eligible for. And the governor actually put in an executive order a few years ago for the state agencies to start this data sharing process. So anyway, this is the essence of the bill. It's a beginning of the conversation, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to have this discussion here during the hearing and then to continue on after that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. The committee will now hear from agency representatives. Please state your name as you speak up. First off, we've got the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we did get a chance to talk with Councilwoman Ramos about this bill, and
Sorry, can you just state your name, please?
Apologies, Leah Ferguson from the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success.
Thank you.
We very much support the spirit of, of moving towards an integrated delivery model. There's a lot of benefits for residents of Baltimore if they can be connected to more than one service from any point of entry. The Baltimore City Community Action Partnership is part of our office, and at the CAP Centers, which just recently approved a strategic plan for the, that will guide its work over the coming years. One of their main goals is to move toward more integrated service delivery among the services that are provided at the CAP Center, so eviction prevention, utility assistance, water bill assistance, and financial empowerment over time, making sure that when residents come in for any of those services, that they are case managed towards eligibility and access to, to any of those services. So very much in alignment with the spirit and intention of this, of this bill. We do have, you know, a reservation, a reservation around what capacity it might take to, to do this, this level of study, and so we'll continue to kind of talk with the council around the expectations and making sure that we are in alignment there. We also very much recognize that so many of the services and resources that are available to residents split multiple kind of agencies and levels of government and organizations, and so the, the scope of this work really could be boundless, and so wanting to continue to work on making sure we're aligned on, on really where are the key points of integration that, that could have the greatest impact and, and get, get some momentum on moving those forward. So appreciate very much the opportunity to continue working on this together and available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson. Next up, we've got the Law Department.
Hello, Mr. Chair. This is Hillary Ruley from the Law Department. As we noted in our report, and Councilwoman Ramos just said, the, the charter vests the executive power in the city that isn't held by the Board of Estimates in the mayor, the administrative departments, commissions, boards. And then it goes on to say that all of those can be directed by ordinance, but not the mayor's office. So the only issue from a legal standpoint with the bill is that the Mayor's Office of, of Children and Family Services is in the mayor's office. So an ordinance to direct this wouldn't really work, but as the councilwoman said, this could be headed up by another agency, department, board, commission, or it could also be turned into a resolution. Either way, it would work. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Hillary. And next up, we've got the Baltimore City Administrator.
Mr. Chair, this is Nina Themlas with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. The city administrator had to step off of the hearing for the remainder of the afternoon. They were unable to submit their report in advance at the hearing today, but they do defer to the opinion of the Law Department and also echo the sentiments of the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Nina. Next up, we've got the Department of Finance.
Hi, good afternoon. Bob Sannemi, Budget Director, representing the Department of Finance. We do not oppose the intent of this, of this bill. We understand, you know, the desire to look for better, better models and making sure, you know, all people that we can assist, you know, receive the assistance that they need when they come in to one of our, one of our centers. I would just echo the, the points from MOCFS. We have a concern about the potential cost in diverting resources away from a lot of the current work that's going on, including managing the eviction prevention program to do a, a deep dive study like this. Definitely open to having conversations with the council or with, and/or MOCFS to figure out what the right, you know, model would be to look into that kind of study. Maybe it's something that we could outsource, or maybe there's other entities that would be better at, at doing that rather than diverting, you know, crucial resources away now during, during a time when so many of our, our folks are in need and need those resources. So definitely open to that conversation, but, but wanted to mark that we do have concerns about the resource requirements and the cost, and this is not something that was, that's included in the current year's, the fiscal '22 budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. I will open the floor to questions from the committee.
Mr. Chair, we had a late request, or I made a late request to have Department of Housing and Community Development and Department of Health also assigned to the bill. They were not expected to have a bill report today, but I believe Housing, I don't see Health, is here. We've had some discussions. I don't expect them to do a report or anything. Just wanted to acknowledge.
Sure, we'll start off with housing.
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for DHCD. I'm joined here by Alice Kennedy, Acting Commissioner of the Department. As DHCD just recently was assigned this bill, we do not have a report to share today, but however, we are committed to working with the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, the Health Department, and other agencies on effective and efficient delivery of service. I just wanted to highlight some of the work that we're currently doing. DHCD currently conducts a no wrong door, single point of entry for programs through the Light Intake and Assessment Unit to best coordinate the delivery of a variety of no and low-cost services to help homeowners become more self-sufficient, safer, more stable, and healthier in their homes. Applications are also screened for eligibility for a number of other local, state, and federal social service programs. These activities include housing rehabilitation and repairs, weatherization, lead hazard reduction, and tax sale prevention. The Office of Home Owners, Ownership initiates the repair process that addresses emergencies, code violations, and health and safety issues for owner-occupied properties. The Office of Home Ownership initiates the process for energy efficiency improvements that lower utility bills and make homes safer and more comfortable. The Office of Home Ownership manages the lead remediation projects for eligible owner and tenant-occupied properties, and DHCD's Tax Sale Services Coordination and Prevention Division assists homeowners in avoiding tax sale and understanding and navigating the tax sale process. DHCD supports the intent of this legislation to provide wraparound services, integration from an early touch point in order to support both children and families together. In 2011, DHCD was one of the first agencies in the country to implement a single point of entry, and the Light Intake and Assessment Unit has received national recognition for this single application and benefit screening approach. This integrated services approach assists in breaking families and their children, children and their families free from the constraints of multigenerational poverty. We look forward to continuing the conversation, and we stand by to answer any questions. It may be worth noting at this time, as the sponsor and finance spoke to, is that this legislation would require a lift from any agency that it was assigned to lead this effort in both facilitating, studying, and writing a report that would detail what an integrated services model would look like for Baltimore. This legislation and its implementation would likely require additional funding for staffing, IT infrastructure, and training. And it also raises some questions about accessing data from the state and across agencies. But as I mentioned, we stand by, ready to work with both the sponsor, the administration, and partner agencies to make sure that we are providing this integrated services approach to the folks in Baltimore. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephanie. Next up, the Health Department. If you've got something. I know you guys just, just were reporting to the bill.
Yep, so I just wanted to note, health is here. My name's Kelly Eastman, Deputy Chief of Staff at the Baltimore City Health Department. As noted, this was a late referral to our agency, so we haven't had a chance to review yet, but we have agreed to submit an agency report at a later date, and just here, happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. I'll open the floor to questions from the committee.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, my
Go ahead.
My good, okay. Sorry, we're talking the same time. My, my question was actually for the sponsor, Councilmember Ramos. Can you, I guess, this is, I get the intent of what you're pushing for. Could you, I guess, expound on the references that you made in your, in the testimony you submitted, the other models, the two-generation model? I guess, you know, what stood out to you about that? Why do you think that's the best practice? Just to help us understand a little bit better why this could be good for Baltimore.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to do that. You'll note, colleagues, in my testimony that I provided a link for a website to the Two Generation Approach, and actually a case study about Maryland. And, and it is exactly what we talked about here of families coming in for whatever services and allowing them to get assessed for all of the various things that they may be able to get, and then working through the process to be able to get them enrolled. So Garrett County is actually the gold standard on this in Maryland. And, and then we also have Montgomery, Prince Gorges, and Allegheny County working on, on this model. It is based in the community action partnerships, and I'm kind of hoping to expand that a little bit. But again, the idea being that, and, and I'll give you another example of, you know, someone, especially now, seeking rental assistance. You know, they're going to seek rental assistance, which is extremely important, but they, you know, right now, especially, there's a lot of other things happening in a family right now that they could use additional assistance. And so that's the idea, is to try to make sure that they get all of that. So all of the family is, is, gets their, their assistance. So I take a look at that, you know, case study. It does go into detail about how this goes from just service delivery to a human development, a human services, a human, and really capacity and community development approach to, to how we do business. And I realize that each agency is starting to do this internally, as you heard the, you know, Ms. Murdock talk about. But I think we can go larger. And again, I don't expect it to happen tomorrow. I think it's a, it's a big deal that we need to really study and think about. I appreciate the question. I also put in a link there to Baltimore's Promise. Baltimore's Promise has started to do this work of the mapping of the systems and where, and, and really is ready to sort of help guide this work. Their challenge has been, you know, data coordination and agency sharing data. And it is a tough question, because when you share, the Health Department in particular, you know, has HIPAA rules, et cetera, but there are ways to be able to share information as you're doing tracking. So literally, everybody, everybody who's involved with that family's life has the same information about what's going on and can track and, and help as we go. So it's, it's, I think it's going to be very powerful. Boston and Massachusetts is doing this, and other states are doing this as well.
Awesome. Yeah, thank you for bringing this forward. Yeah, it kind of builds on some of the questions that I asked a few budget cycles ago around like having a single application for people. So I didn't know that there was sort of this larger model of doing this. At the time, I was just like, let's just do one piece of paper, but it's good to know, and we'll do a deeper dive on these other models as we move forward. That was all I had, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Burnett. I actually have a clarifying question, just to sort of understand how the model works. And it, it sounds like you, you, you submit a request with your information, and then that information goes out to all agencies? Is that how it works? Really, or?
Yeah. No, thank you for that clarifying question. So let's say I need energy assistance. I've got a big BGE bill, and I need energy assistance. So I'm going to go into, right now, it's the Community Action Partnership Centers that provide us with energy assistance. So I'll go in, and I say, I need energy assistance. And somebody who's the case manager will say, and the intake person will say, okay, give me all your information. And then they'll say, well, you know, who else is in your family? And you get to talk about who's in your family. And then, you know, there will be, there's, there's actually a program, I forget what it's called, Ms. Ferguson may remember, that, you know, you put the data in, and some of the, and all of the programs could light up and say, oh, you're eligible for all of these things. Okay? And then, you know, the, the person, and then I would say, well, I also have a grandmom, and she needs some help too. So let's bring her in. And, oh, my son, I'm going to bring him in. And so that's how it would work. And that whole family gets an assessment of what they need, and the technology is there to say, okay, you get all these programs, let's get you enrolled in each one to the extent that they can. And then all of the agencies that have been dealing with this, and partners, and nonprofit partners would have the information and would track the person. How is that different from today? My understanding is that if someone walks in and says, I need something, and say, okay, let me refer you over here. So then it is the person who has to then go in. So then it is the person who has to then go and be proactive to get referred, to get applications, to get all of that. Whereas this system says, okay, let's see what you need. Oh, you're eligible for all of this, let's make it happen.
Great, that's really, really helpful. The other question that I had was, what are the bounds of the services that we want to sort of alert people to? Now, of course, we want to think of social services. You need housing, we'll help you find housing. But we don't want this to go into something that's maybe not so urgent. We don't want to have unnecessary alerts to someone that, you know, I can't even think of an example. But like, what are the bounds? And what are sort of the best practices that we've seen in other places on what they focus on and the population they're trying to target? Is that clear?
Yeah, so we could, I am a big thinker, so I'm thinking everything, which is, I think, Ms. Ferguson's point is like, oh, wait, this is big. So it, you know, because it could be anything from housing to energy assistance, food stamps, you know, disability, Social Security, homeowner's tax credit. And in the bill, you'll see a lot about the homeowner's tax credit, because that was on my mind, and it still is. And so, you know, whereas the Housing Department, as you heard from Ms. Murdock, has said, okay, here's the services that we're going to try to integrate for the people that come to us for housing. And then, you know, they go to the Community Action Centers, and they're starting to work on that particular piece of that. This person's coming for energy assistance, let's make sure they get the rest of these things. But how can we make sure that all of that is shared? And that we, the person is able to get those resources from all the various agencies and partners? So it can be humongous. It's a lot. I said, you know, Boston is doing this. We can also look back at Montgomery-Pritchgorges that are starting to do it from a community action perspective. And I go up and visit my, or have my good friend Dwayne from Garrett County talk about how they've done it up there. So people are doing it now. It is huge, it's a big deal. So I don't, again, this may take 10 years to actually make it happen and get the right money together and all of that. But I would just want to start the conversation.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from folks on the committee?
I just wanted to touch on Mr. Sennemy's comments about sort of the resources needed to actually do the study. I appreciate that, and I certainly don't want to get in the way of making sure that we're addressing our emergency, so we can always play with the enactment date of the bill so that we're clear we're not taking resources from, you know, what we're dealing with right now. So I'm fine with that. Just wanted to let the committee know.
Sure, thank you. All right, with no further questions, we'll open up to public testimony. So we'll start with, I can be one moment. All right, we're going to pull up the instructions.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't organize testimony today because I knew we weren't going to be able to discuss it. But if there's somebody on, I'd love to hear them.
Sure, yeah. We'll open it up, and we'll describe this once so that if there's testimony for the other bills, we don't have to revisit it. So quickly, for public testimony, committee staff will coordinate. Please be patient. If you're connecting online, please use the raise hand function to indicate that you testify. Each speaker must state their name prior to speaking. And users who cannot be identified by name will be unmuted by the host one by one. If you do not wish to testify, please say so when you are unmuted. Attendees will hear two beeps when they are unmuted. Please state your name at the beginning of testimony. And if a speaker is inaudible, they will be directed to call back or provide the testimony in the chat function. With that, please use the raise hand function on the bottom right of your screen if you're in the hearing and would like to testify on this bill. Okay, I don't see any folks looking to testify. Do we have any folks on the phone? All right, we have no testimony. So with that, I'll, it looks like Councilman Ramos just got booted.
Still here.
Oh, okay, great, maybe it's my computer acting funky. We're actually going to go into recess, because we're not going to vote this out today. But just wanted to open the floor to you, Councilman Ramos, if there are any closing comments before we put this bill in recess.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, colleagues. I think this is a really great beginning of the discussion. And I really appreciate my colleagues asking really great questions to just get exactly what we're trying to do here. So I look forward to further discussions, and then coming back to the committee with the next step. So thank you very much for taking the time today to listen to the bill and start the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to jump right into it. No breaks here. The next bill we'll be hearing is Bill 21-0106, Studying Report Oversight of the Baltimore City Fire Department for the purpose of requiring that the Baltimore City Fire Department, in consultation with certain other agencies, submit a report to the parent city council evaluating the practice, the policies, practices, and internal control systems of the department, and evaluating the potential establishment of an office dedicated to compliance investigations within the fire department, and providing for special effective date. This bill was introduced on July 19, 2021, and it was sponsored by Councilmember Chris Burnett. I'll open the floor to Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. And so to jump right in on this bill, it's a study and reporting bill that is essentially seeking to look at the, or exploring ideas around additional oversight and around the department's internal disciplinary processes and investigations, questioning, you know, how they handle these investigations, who's involved, and analysis of other departments and how they handle the internal investigations. It involves a deeper look at the role of the Inspector General and complaints to the Inspector General, as well as the Office of Equity and Civil Rights. And then also looks at the, in that, we're called for an evaluation of the department's data performance and evaluation models and systems that are in place. Essentially, again, very similar to the other study and reporting bills, these are all sort of emanating from the analysis done by the Labor Committee in the last term that looked at hiring, firing, promotional practices within the Baltimore City Fire Department, and making sure that they are as equitable as possible. And so this is what that is seeking to do. There were also amendments sent around. I don't know if you want me to talk about the amendments, or just hold off on that.
Let's, let's, let's hold off on the amendments. We'll get the initial report out first.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. And we will now jump into agency reports. Once again, please, folks, state your name before we go forward. First up, I've got the Fire Department.
Good afternoon, again, Mr. Chairman. This is Roman Clark, Executive Assistant Chief, Baltimore City Fire Department. We do stand, you know, by our report with the outlined concerns within our report.
Thank you, Chief Clark. Next up, we've got the Board of Fire Commissioners.
Hello, Councilman. My name's Shannon Prateroli. I'm here representing the Baltimore City Board of Fire Commissioners. I'm mainly here listening today. We weren't aware of this bill prior to being brought to our attention about a week ago, and just interested in learning about its origins and stand ready to help the city council in any way that you feel is necessary in order to inform your work on this matter.
Okay, thank you, Shannon. Next up, we've got the Administrator's Office.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nina Demelis with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations. The Office of the City Administrator stands by its report and taking no position on this bill, and also would like to re-highlight the concerns expressed by the Fire Department in their legislation. And then finally, they look forward to just working with the Fire Department and council to produce any required reports or analyses as a result of this legislation. Thank you.
Thank you, Nina. Next up, we've got the Law Department.
Hello, Mr. Chair. This is Hillary Ruley from the Law Department. So unlike the bill we just heard, this would be an ordinance directing the Fire Department, and that is fine. The only issue here is that it seeks to require legal advice be published, and that's not something we can do. It's up to the client in each situation to determine whether they want to waive their attorney-client privilege and publish legal advice. So we just recommended an amendment to the bill to delete that section. It's lines 18 and 20 on page one. And other than that, we would approve the bill.
Thank you, Hillary. Next up, we've got the Department of Finance.
Hi, good afternoon. Bob Sennemy, Budget Director, representing the Department of Finance. We do not oppose the intent of this bill. We would be, of course, be happy to participate if there are any budget or financial information that's needed as part of that report. I do want to defer to the concerns of finance on, I'm sorry, to the Fire Department on, you know, their concerns of putting this together and what the resource requirements would be. But from a budget standpoint, if there's historical information or financial information that would be needed for something like this, we would, of course, be happy to assist.
Excellent, thank you, Bob. We've got the Labor Commissioner.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Deborah Moore Carter from the Office of the Labor Commissioner. We stand by our report, taking no position. However, wanted to remind you, as far as discipline is concerned, that discipline is a condition of employment. So therefore, if there are any changes in discipline or disciplinary policies, the Office of the Labor Commissioner would expect to be involved from the negotiations perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Deborah. Next up, we've got the Office of the Inspector General.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. My name is Yvonne Brooks, Deputy Inspector General. If we stand by the report submitted, taking no position on the legislation, I will add, on reading subsection 1B7, you'd asked for a disaggregated complaint type, and I don't believe that I had added that to this particular report. So of the reports that fell outside of the OIG's jurisdiction, I can tell you generally, they were HR-related, whether it was discrimination or labor issues, dealing with such matters or allegations, dealing with promotion leave or favoritism.
Thank you. Next up, we've got the Office of Equity and Civil Rights.
Good afternoon, everyone. Dana Moore, Director of the Office of Equity and Civil Rights. We stand by our written report. We take no position and do defer to the Fire Department for the concerns that they've expressed.
Thank you, Chief Moore. Next up, we've got the Department of Human Resources.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Quentin Herbert, Director of Human Resources. We stand by our report, taking no position on this legislation, and we defer to the Fire Department for the issues raised in their report.
Thank you, Director Herbert. All right, that concludes our agency reports. I'll open the floor to questions from the committee, and I'll start off with the sponsor. Councilman Burnett, you have any questions you want to start with?
Yep. Thank you. So the first question I had is for the Law Department. In the charter, it states that the Board of Fire Commissioners may investigate all matters affecting the conduct of the department. Through your legal interpretation of the word "conduct", can you provide us with the scope of work that the board has the legal authority to engage in as written today in the charter?
I'd have to do legal research to figure out what that meant at the time and how it's been implemented, and, you know, where it is today. I couldn't, certainly couldn't off the top of my head.
You mean, you don't look at this stuff every day? I'm joking. So we'll follow up on that, because the follow-up question I had would require you to actually have that in front of you. So I'll send that as a written question. The second, and maybe you have this, maybe you don't, what would be the legal process of creating an office that works under the authority of the Board of Fire Commissioners to assist them with carrying out their responsibilities to review departmental processes and investigate the conduct of the agency?
Well, I mean, anytime you create new entities, you have to make sure that's permitted under the charter. So it would go hand in hand with what it said before. If this is already a function that's given to someone else or given to the fire chief under the charter, then that's where it would stay.
Okay, those are my first two, Mr. Chair.
Any questions from folks? Councilman Ramos?
I'm actually trying to find the Fire Department's report. In Legistar, the wrong report is posted. And I am trying to, so in the meantime, could the Fire Department go over its concerns while I try to find this? Yeah, we didn't get this, the Fire Department's report.
Yes, ma'am, I have it. Okay. Baltimore City Fire Department, BCFD, or the department, does not oppose City Council Bill 21-0106. However, the department respectfully submits the following concerns. In Section 1A, the 120-day timeframe for completion of the report would be challenging. Given the department's current administrative staffing constraints, BCFD has a limited administrative staff, and creating this report would necessitate diverting some of those employees away from their regular duties to devote a significant amount of time to researching and drafting the required report. The department believes additional resources may need to be added to BCFD administrative staff to facilitate meetings, additional reporting requirements. The department respectfully recommends an amendment to the bill to allow the department up to one year to submit the required report. Bullet 2, BCFD also respectfully requests some clarity on what is meant by performance management program. In the context of this bill, and what, and what particular metrics should be employed to conduct the analysis required of the bill in Section B8. And that's our entire statement.
Councilman Ramos, you want to follow up with that question?
I guess it looks like the Fire Department asked a question about what's something specifically meant in the statute. So I don't know if the sponsor wanted to ask that, answer that question. I mean, in the bill.
Yeah, so the Fire Department currently has a Safety and Risk Management Division and a Quality Assurance Section in EMS. Both of these entities are supposed to conduct internal audits, evaluations, inspections of internal practices to ensure that the department is in compliance with industry standards. The request is for them to include in the report an explanation of what these and any other compliance units do to ensure internal accountability, what behaviors they are assessing, and the metrics that are being used to gauge outcomes. An example being, you know, safety and risk management. How often is the drive cam being randomly reviewed to monitor driver behavior of a fire apparatus? And is there a scorecard to determine individual unit and agency compliance with internal policies? And essentially, just expanding that out is what we were trying to get at there.
Councilman Ramos, how do you?
If I could follow up. Could you, this is a question for the sponsor. So you have another bill that's about operations, and this one is about oversight. Can you tell us a little bit about the difference between the two, just so I'm clear?
Yeah, so the other one, 21-0107, focuses more on things like EMS scheduling, fire suppression, like work schedules, the impact of some of the other programs that they offer, community-based programs. the impact of some of the other programs that they offer, community-based programs, how they conduct fire investigations, how they use data and data-driven strategies within the department to monitor, you know, success, where your metrics look like. So they're different in that way. Essentially, one focuses more on staffing and operations and performance management. The other focuses more on disciplinary practices and oversight of that process.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Um, Mr. Chair, that was my two questions, but I have another one.
Oh, good. We'll circle back around. I've got a couple of questions of the Fire Chief. So Chief Ford, you've been Fire Chief now seven years. How, how often have you proposed administrative or operational policies? And how often do you coordinate these policies with the Board of Fire Commissioners, if at all?
Administrative and operational changes happen often. It's a, it's a natural occurrence of managing the department. On a monthly basis, the Board of Commissioners meet on the second Wednesday of every month, and at that point, I give them basically a state of the Fire Department. And, and each assistant chief is there to also to outline what's going on in their disciplinary area, their discipline, the area of discipline, rather. We speak about the challenges and the direction that we're going in, and at that point, they give me feedback and perspective.
I see. Awesome. Thank you. And then also during the seven-year period, there've been a number of Inspector General reports, consent decrees, and other incidents that, that have come up. How many investigations has the Board of Fire Commissioners initiated to review the different administrative and operational practices during that time?
I'm sorry, I misunderstood you. You're asking about the IG reports in respects to recommendations. When, when we did receive IG reports or other reports, or even when, when other issues occur, and they don't have to necessarily be initiated by IG reports. That's always part of the introduct, that's always part of the information we share with, with the Board of Commissioners. And at that point, they, like I said, they, they have a ability to have understanding. The chair currently is Herman Williams. And he's
I'll clarify my question. So these IG reports and otherwise, they come up, we realize that there's now an issue?
Yes.
How, how often has the Board of Fire Commissioners taken that, done an investigation and recommend, recommended policy changes or?
They have not done investigations.
Okay.
No.
Thank you. I'll move on to other questions from the committee.
I have more. If no one else has any, or if you want to circle back around to Councilwoman Ramos, I think she had a couple more.
I'll come after you.
Okay. Okay. So this is for Chief Ford. Can you explain to us how your, how the disciplinary system works from the initial complaint through the last step of the process, and what personnel within the agency is responsible for conducting investigations?
Chief Savela, I'm going to defer to Chief Savela at this time and let him walk us through that process.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Council, Council members. So discipline process, any, any member can file a complaint against any other member based on what, what they perceive is, could be the issue. So initially, it starts out, they notify their direct supervisor of, about this complaint. Unless, of course, the complaint is against that direct supervisor, then they have permission to go one step above and, and go around that supervisor to to let, let them know about it, report it, rather. At that time, the deputy chief gets involved, or the shift commander, whoever sees the shifts, he assigns a battalion chief as the initial screening officer at the time. He'll do an initial screening to see if it's valid, if it's something that needs to be further investigated. Then he'll send his recommendation to the deputy chief. The deputy chief will confer with the Director of HR if, if it's going to move to an investigation. And then once, once the ruling is agreed to, it goes straight to an investigation, and then that's when they do interviews, they pull in the witnesses, and then they thoroughly investigate it at that point in time. Then at that point in time, they makes a recommendation, the investigating officer, the deputy chief will uphold it or, or look into it himself or herself. And then at that point in time, they'll make a recommendation, and then because we have a discipline grid, depending on where that person sits on the grid, is what the recommendation will be compared to the discipline history of the member that the complaint has been filed against, depending on where it goes. Then it could go to counseling, reprimand is the next step, suspension days or possible suspension days. And anything that was, that includes suspension days would have to go to an administrative hearing where the member gets to have a union representative or, or other representative with them at the hearing. They sit at administrative hearing, and then again, that's completed. So that's the step that, that they move through.
And if, if through that process, there's a recommendation of termination at that point, it, it makes it to the Fire Chief's office, and there's a hearing done on that. And decisions are, I make the ultimate decision of termination. At that point, any employee and through their labor representation and labor, labor is present, then advises them of two possible options they have in, in challenging the department's decision on termination.
Thank you, Chief. As a follow-up on that, since you've been chief, have there been conversations, or what conversations have been had about creating an independent internal investigation section?
We've had several conversations about that. And in fact, I've worked for that, but specifically not, specifically to handle internal investigation, internal issues, like, just like I imagine the police department has an internal investigation arm. And we've talked about that several times. Okay.
And there's a data request, Mr. Chair, because I, I don't, maybe the chief has it on hand, maybe not. On average, how many fire suppression and EMS personnel are terminated each year for disciplinary charges? Do you have that on hand?
I do not.
Okay. I'll send that as a follow-up.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Those are my, my two.
Thank you. Councilwoman Ramos, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To the sponsor, given what we just heard as the process, your bill is seeking to document that process and then also go have recommendations for any changes, is that correct?
Essentially, yeah. That's what we're looking to do, and just asking the department to, to look into other similarly sized departments to see how they handle these, you know, internal disciplinary processes as well.
And then earlier, I think, Chief Ford, I recognize that there were OIG reports that come periodically, and then they have to, you know, be addressed. We recently got an OIG report about the take-home vehicles, and I'm wondering, I know it's tangential to this, but I am wondering about what's the outcome of that investigation and what the policies that are going to change in order to make sure that this policy is not abused in the future.
We may not argue that, that the policy wasn't abused, but we normally evaluate take-home vehicles. When I initially got here, I think we were close to sixty take-home vehicles, and Chief Case, you're going to have to correct me if I'm wrong.
Yes, sir. Right now, we're down to thirty-one vehicles from sixty.
Yeah. So we, we normally go through a process of evaluating both take-home vehicles and even, even the take, even the take-home vehicle policy in respects to what we're doing, what we need to do, and even comparable organizations. And comparable organizations to us are like Baltimore County and Ana Rondo County, organizations that are like-sized to us and, and that do some of the same things, but even that being case, they don't have the same call volume that we have and the same issue that we have. But we still have, we still have to make the policy. We have to adjust the policy to our needs and the city's needs. So that's, that's actually even ongoing issue. We changed the policy, I think we changed it some two years ago. We've made changes to it around two years ago. So I, it's, it's an ongoing evaluation, and we, we do it amongst, we, we do it amongst ourselves evaluating other departments and interior needs. So it, it, it wasn't, like I said, it wasn't a process that, that the policy was abused. It was still coming up on the time where we had to evaluate who had take-home cars and the circumstances they were, they were taking them home, whether or not we needed them at that time. And, and I need to point out we we pull in cars, but I've also sent cars out before. One of the individuals that I did it to, that I granted take-home car privileges because sorry about that, emergency alert. It was because we had so many facility problems, having overnight and on weekends, and we were having to remove people out of stations. And we had to get the stations repaired as quickly as possible, and also had to have people relocated. So I needed somebody who, who was always on call for that. So that was one of the things that instituted a change on my behalf. I'm just using that as an example.
And then how often are you review, how often are you reviewing your policies? Is it just when something comes up like this?
About, I think we've been doing it almost every year at the same time we review the cars, the take-home vehicles. I think we do it at least every year, if not every other year. And, and it has, it hasn't necessarily, and, and yes, there, when, when things do occur, we, we do review it.
So I'm talking about like policies in general?
Oh, policy.
Yeah.
No, we, depending on the circumstances, we continuously review policies. We continuously review policies, and we continuously make changes to them. And a lot of times, it's based on circumstances. Sometimes it's based on environment or dynamics.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I, I want to follow up on that line of questioning. Chief Ford, are, are, are personnel still traveling across state lines with city vehicles?
Yes, sir.
And then how many scheduled days do your shift commanders work during the month?
Approximately. Chief Savela, you tell me approximately how many days they work?
Yeah, the, the shift commanders, the, the four shift commanders, they're assigned, we have one assigned to A, B, C, and D shift. They're the, they're the maps, sworn people that do not work the normal nine-to-five, eight-weekday schedule. So they work the regular shift like firefighters. So their rotation is probably around eight twenty-four-hour shifts a month that they work. But that being said, they also have specific duties and assignments that are assigned to them concerning the department, attending meetings, handling groups that they have to talk with. They've all, they all have certain assignments that they have to work on. And there's, there's other days that they're not actually working their shifts. They'll be attending meetings or, or meeting with groups or handling special events or, and so they have additional duties other than just coming to work the eight days a week. And when they're here, they're basically in charge of field operations. And then they report directly to me while they're working if something comes out of the ordinary, comes around.
Sure. And it's, it's my understanding that they have a take-home vehicle, but they also have designated vehicles that they use during their, during their tour duty. Why do they need two vehicles?
The go ahead, Stephen, I'll follow up.
Well, the, the, the vehicle for the tour of duty, that's basically assigned to, it's, it's called Car Five. That's assigned to the shift commander, so that stays there. The reason they have the other take care vehicles is like a perfect example, we had the four alarm fire the other morning. We, we call them in to handle some shortages of, if we have multiple battalion chiefs. So we call them in, and that's part of their duties as well, not to mention the fact that if they have a community meeting or a meeting to meet with somebody concerning their specific areas that they handle, they have vehicles to, to travel to them. So the vehicles, the take-home vehicles, they drive them in, they park them, and then they use the vehicle that's assigned to Car Five while they're at work. There are other days off, all their other assignments and duties, not to mention the fact we could have a fire, a large-scale fire at one AM in the morning, and we have a, basically a call-in rotation where if it's, if they're up or if something's going on, they get a call at two o'clock in the morning, and they have to come in and respond in. And then they use those cars for responses while they, once they've been called in.
So used for emergency responses and
Absolutely, yeah. And the state, and the emergency response, the concept is not just that they would go to that incident. They may have to go to the incident based on assignment. But they, they have to come over and take, they may have to come in, take over field operations for the entire city. They may have to go into a certain battalion. Sometimes we have several multiple alarms that occur where they have to go in and, and manage those incidences.
So in, in the last three years, for instance, how often, how many emergency incidents would a shift commander have had to respond to? Do we have that information?
I, I can, I can pull that information. I don't know it off the top of my head. No.
All right, that'd be really helpful to understand how often we're using it for a legitimate issue.
Yeah.
So I'll make a request for that.
Absolutely.
I'll move on. Any other questions from the committee? Councilwoman Burnett, do you have any other?
Burnett, do you have any?
You can go to Ramos, Councilwoman Ramos first.
Florence?
Thank you. Forgive us for asking these questions about this. That's quite a subject that's tangential to the bill, but here you are. I was curious about the take-home vehicles. You said that it's shift commanders that get them, and if they're needed in an emergency, they, they do come in. My question is, if they're across state lines, they're not very close to come to the, to the emergency. So how, how does that work? Do you just call the closest person? It doesn't make sense to me that we would be sending cars out, out of state in order to try to get somebody in fast when they're not, when they're far away anyway.
Yeah, I, Councilwoman Ramos, that's, that's part of what I was trying to explain is, is that they don't, they don't necessarily have to go to that event. They may come, they may end up having to go to the event and take over certain parts of the event. And, and in perspective, that, the distance that they may be, even though they're all out of the state, over the state line, may only be a twenty-minute drive, twenty to twenty-five minute drive. And we're talking about incidents, case in point, the four alarm, I think they were there working five hours at least. Domino Sugar, you know, how long were they there? So, yes, they may go to that event, but every, all, all the management of, of operations or major parts of management operations may be at one event, and we need other people to manage the rest of the city and manage the rest of the operations. Sometime just play traffic cop on the resources that we have left, or communicate with, with our other municipalities. Sometime just play traffic cop on the resources that we have left or communicate with with um, our other municipalities in order to bring them in. So um, the response time is 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 isn't, is not extraordinarily extensive based upon the fact of how, basically how close we are to the state line. The response time is is, I I understand how how that perspective sounds, but the response time is not extraordinarily extensive in that way. And and they, and 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 up until this point, it's been, it's been reasonably effective. If if you look at the gas explosion and a few other, a few other issues that we've had to respond to that were large incidences. We we've been able to facilitate uh, the necess, the necessary oversight of of the city in order to manage it.
Okay, thanks. Um, do the personnel you use, the the shift commanders use these vehicles as personal vehicles? Like driving family members around?
They're not person, they're not personal vehicles, but if if an incident, they've if if they take their, if they're on call, they rotate on call. I think there's certain ones that are off call during a certain amount of time, and then they can't take the car anywhere. They have to drive their personal car anywhere they go at that point. But if they're on call during that time, they they have to take the vehicle with them. If they do, and they understand they can't leave a certain area because of, because they're on call. But they have to take the vehicle with them because if they get a call, they've got to come. No matter where they are, and 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 just like you heard the alert that just went off, I get alerts on my phone all the time about incidents that happen, and they they, as soon as they get the alert, they they head in. So they're supposed to take that no matter where they go, no matter where they go.
So if they're dropping their kid off to school when they're um, on call and they get a call, they drop the kid off at school in the city car and then head over.
Yes, ma'am. If I had a single mother who was a shift commander, even if she was living in the ci, in the state, she would have to do that. Now, she'd have to have, she'd have to have plan A, plan B, plan B, C, if something occurred where she got called in. But yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And this is not what what I'm, what I'm stating now is not uncommon. I mean, I, this.
Right. I I just feel there might be a liability issue, but that that's, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll study it further and and see how it goes. Um, and then um, I um, so I'm good. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilman Ramos. I I want to add um, one piece to the additional, the the request that I asked for earlier with regard to um, shift commanders. Can you also add any incidents where the the chief of the training academy, uh, chief of the training academy I had to report to?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
And I think here, we're we're just trying to make sure that we're being thoughtful about doling out these take home vehicles. Um, we certainly don't want to um, do so unnecessarily.
And I understand, and there there's a balance between unnecessary use of vehicles and the liability that's associated with it and the necess, and the necessity of being able to operate. And that's what, that's what we try to balance all the time, and that's the reason why you'll see a a, for lack of a better word, a ebb and flow of this process.
That's right. Um, I I I'll allow um, one one round of quite, one last round of questioning in case uh, sponsor or any others have final questions. Councilman Burnett, you know, if you want to jump in.
Yeah, I have more. Um, uh, Chief Ford, um, can you explain to the committee with the process uh, the fire department currently has in place to handle uh, internal uh, equal opportunity complaints? Uh, and what personnel within your agency is responsible for conducting these investigations?
Um, we we current, Chief Savella, can you start off? I know you just took over that that department, but could you start talking about it?
Yeah, we we have a uh, E O C uh, officer that the complaints run through. Um, she gets them, she investigates them, um, and she follows the process that we have in place. Not to mention, we have the equity office that we we've put in place as well. So, yeah, we have a member of H R, and that's assigned E O C complaints, and that's that's who gets them. And and then she does her uh, her investigation and makes her recommendations as they come through.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Let me, can I um, is um, Kim, are you on the line as well?
Yes, yes, sir.
Any anything you would like to add to that?
Well, just that we are in the process, everything that Chief Savella said, just additionally, we are in the process of reviewing um, our E O policies, our dis uh, disciplinary processes just to make sure that um, we are operating with the lens of equity um, in how we effectuate our discipline. So it's not something that um, I can speak to right now with a level of completion, but just that we are um, looking at how we um, identify opportunities within the agency.
And also, um, the um, V H R, Director of D H R.
Uh, Mr. Chair, again, this is Quentin Herbert, the Director of uh, Human Resources. And the the departments, I would just with this caveat, say that the department's protocols around their E E O investigations only apply to internal investigations. Where these investigations go is determined by the employee, whether it's an internal investigation or an external investigation. If it is an external investigation that is handled by an an outside a agency like the E E O C, um, there is no protocol for how the city investigates those claims. The outside agency does the investigation. We provide documents and information, and they ultimately do the investigation and make the report. So the 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 protocol uh, for E E O investigations in the city applied to those, only to those internal complaints where an employee brings a complaint internally to the agency. And I can say that we have assisted um, Ms. Woods from the Fire Department and others in in their shop in conducting those E E O investigations where they have had some capacity issues or needed some additional guidance.
Thank you. Any other questions from the committee? Seeing no further questions, uh, Councilman Burnett, any thoughts before we go into recess?
Uh, if you want, I can address the amendments. Obviously, we're not voting today.
We have not, we have not touched on the amendments. That's absolutely right. Um, let's jump into the amendments.
Yep, so they are uh, both pretty, I think, pretty straightforward. Uh, the amendment number one uh, came at the request of the Law Department. Uh, as they cited, this request uh, was protected by attorney-client privilege. So uh, that removes uh, that uh, initial uh, question around um, the Board of Fire Commissioners uh, and sort of the advice uh, or reporting out of uh, legal relationships that the Law Department felt was attorney-client privileged. So we're just trying to respond essentially to their requests. Um, amendment number two clarifies the language of what is being requested in the department's evaluation of their current performance management program centered around internal accountability systems. And if one exists, an evaluation of that program. If one does not exist, a plan, asking for a plan to be put in place. So um, essentially just had, basically saying if there are best practices out there uh, or other uh, agencies are using um, to report on that instead.
Awesome. Thank you. Any questions from the committee about the proposed amendments? Okay, seeing no, no questions. Um, Councilman Burnett, did you want to move the amendments today? I'm opening, considering that.
Yeah, I think it makes sense that way for the future hearings. So there's additional dialogue I need to have with the agency um, on this bill and the next one. So if we could move the amendments, since there's no concerns from the committee, that'd be great, and we can come back to the table later.
Sounds good. I'll just tend to motion uh, to move the amendments.
I'd like to move uh, amendment, uh, both amendments as a package, Mr. Chair.
Uh, so I've got a motion by Councilman Burnett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Cohen. Um, Conway, yes. Burnett?
Yes.
Yes. Cohen?
Yes.
Costello? Is he still with us? Councilman Costello? I'll shoot him a message and come back to him. Um, Councilman Glover?
Sorry, sorry, Mr. Chairman. I'm a yes.
Thank you, Councilman Costello. Uh, Councilman Glover, shoot him the message as well. Um, Councilman Porter is absent. Uh, and Councilman Ramos?
Yes.
All right, Councilman Glover, are you still there? All right, we'll, we'll go back to Councilman Glover. He may be, uh, he may be stepped away from his computer for a second. Regardless, it it passes. With uh, five votes to zero nays. So we are not going to vote on the bill today. So um, with that, any closing uh, comments, statements, thoughts from the sponsor, Councilman Burnett?
Uh, no, I I don't have anything else. Um, looking forward to continue dialogue on this. I will be, just for the committee knows, I will be meeting with the Fire Chief and his team um, offline to continue the dialogue on this bill and the other builders, that especially some of the concerns they had about the reporting timeline and others. So there may be additional amendments coming. I just need more time to work on it.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilman Burnett. Uh, this bill is in recess, and we are going to move on to um, Bill twenty-one dash zero one zero seven, Study and Report Operations of the Baltimore City Fire Department for the purpose of requiring that the Baltimore City Fire Department, in consultation with certain other agencies, submit a report to the mayor and city council evaluating the practice, the policies, practices, and internal control systems of the department and evaluating the potential establishment of an office dedicated to compliance and investigations within the Fire Department and providing for a special effective date. This bill was introduced on July nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, and it was sponsored by Councilmember Chris Burnett. Uh, Councilman Burnett, for yours.
Um, just for clarity, clarity, this one is around um, operations and fire, fire EMS. Yeah, I think you read the description for the last one, maybe, or maybe I heard you wrong.
Uh, maybe I have the wrong one here. I will go ahead and correct the record on that. Give me one moment. This is zero one oh seven. Okay. Um, so this is for the purpose requiring that the Baltimore City Fire Department, in consultation with certain other agencies, submit a report to the mayor and city council evaluating departmental, departmental operations, fire suppression and emergency medical services staffing, community risk reduction programs, and performance management programs, and providing for a special effective date. That sounds right. All right, there we go. For yours.
Uh, so uh, I won't spend a whole lot of time on this, uh, because I kind of touched on it uh, in the last hearing. Uh, this is essentially uh, looking, uh, doing a deeper dive and analysis around uh, fire and EMS uh, scheduling, um, looking at uh, best practices and other and work, sort of a workload analysis uh, of at least uh, three other fire departments uh, who do similar shifts or look at other similar shift styles um, in uh, analysis of um, the smoke alarm program and other um, community facing initiatives. Uh, and then uh, looking at uh, some of the uh, issues around uh, demographic, racial and gender demographic um, uh, analysis of employees assigned to battalions one, two, and six. And looking at uh, potential disparities and assignments there as well as um, a, sorry, the computer is not, let me be great today. Uh, I look at how the agency uh, look, looks at the uh, data-driven strategies and the performance management systems uh, as well. Uh, so that's, so the general overview uh, is sort of, again, calling for a deeper dive in how we do scheduling uh, and assigning folks to uh, different battalions. And there are also similarly some uh, technical amendments that we can, I guess, discuss a little bit later.
Um, how how straightforward are these amendments? I mean, if you'd like, you can describe it now, and I think uh, maybe that'll make a little bit more sense when the agencies refer to anything they may have. That's what I meant about.
Yep, so amendment one uh, is in response to uh, the concern raised by the Office of the Labor Commissioner and schedule recommendations that fall within the purview of the collective bargaining process. Uh, so this amendment asks for a sample of other staffing models being used by fire departments of a similar size and call volumes. So sort of uh, trying to address that concern. Um, and amendment two clarifies the language of what is being uh, requested in the department's evaluation uh, of their current data-driven strategies and performance management program. And if one exists, an evaluation of that program, and if one does not exist, uh, a plan to put one in place.
Okay, thank you. Uh, now the committee will hear from agency representatives. Please use, um, please state your name uh, before you speak. Uh, we'll start off with the Fire Department.
Um, once again, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Roman Clark, Executive Assistant Chief of Baltimore City Fire Department. We do stand, you know, by our report um, with the um, excuse me. We stand by our report with the outlined concerns uh, within our report.
Thank you, Chief Clark. Next up, we've got the Office of the Administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Nina Themless with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations on behalf of the City Administrator. The Office stands by its report and taking no position and looks forward to working with the Fire Department and Council on any required reports as a result of this legislation.
Thank you, Nina. Next, we've got the Law Department.
Hello, Mr. Chair. This is Hillary Ruley for the Law Department. We would approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you, Hillary. Next, we've got the Department of Finance.
Hi, good afternoon. Bob Sennemy, Budget Director, representing Department of Finance. Uh, we stand by our report. We do not oppose. Um, you know, we would likely play a role in this and and like for the earlier report, uh, gathering historical information and positions and dollars that support these uh, services, and we're happy to assist in in that regard. Um, and so we stand by our report, no opposition.
Thank you, Bob. Uh, next up, we've got the Labor Commissioner.
Good afternoon. Deborah Moore Carter, Office of the Labor Commissioner. We stand by our report. Our concerns, number one, as I stated previously, schedules are negotiated, so it will be a negotiations process. Secondly, we do not uh, typically put staffing in the M O U because um, the minute you are not staffed as you agree to in the M O U, that could lead to a number of grievances. But our office would be happy to work with any committee um, during this process.
Thank you. Uh, next, we've got the Office of Equity and Civil Rights.
Um, uh, good afternoon. We take no position, obviously would defer to the Fire Department, any concerns that they might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and finally, the Department of Human Resources.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Quentin Herbert, Director of the Department of Human Resources. Uh, the department stands by our formal report, taking no position on this bill. We would uh, defer to the Fire Department.
Thank you, Director. Uh, any questions from the committee? Actually, I'll start off with questions from the sponsor.
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. I'm gonna get my questions up. All right, here we go. Um, so to, I start with the Fire Department. Um, uh, Chief Ford, um, can you explain to the committee the rotation of the current work schedule for fire suppression and EMS?
Chief Savella? I'm sorry, uh, Councilman, I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer to Chief Savella. Yes.
Yes, sir. Okay, so currently we have for field units, suppression and EMS, we have two, two separate work schedules. Suppression, they work twenty-four hours on, twenty-four, it's four shifts. So they're divided into four shifts, A, B, C, and D. They work twenty-four hours on, twenty-four hours off, twenty-four hours on again, and then they're off for five days. And then what is added in there every, each labor union, the firefighters and the suppression, it has what, what are called impact days that are put in there. On average, they're around every thirty-two or thirty-four days, depending on the union. Local seven thirty-four has ten impact days. Local nine sixty-four has eleven impact days. And remember, all these work schedules are negotiated through the labor process. So this, this was a negotiated labor agreement with these work schedules. What the impact days do is they're not just extra days, they're days that bring up the average weekly salary of the members to the forty, above forty hours per week. So that's why they're added. Those impact days are added in there. So that's what, that's what the suppression side works. And by suppression, I mean the fire trucks, the fire engines, and the hook and ladders. For, so everyone will understand that, I guess, a little better. EMS, they work, and that's both ALS, which is Advanced Life Support, and BLS, Basic Life Support. So they work a different rotation. They work two ten-hour days, zero seven hundred to seventeen hundred. They work two of those. Then they work two fourteen-hour nights, which is seventeen hundred to zero seven hundred the next day. And then they're off for four, for four days in between. And so each suppression, any mess, they work on an eight-day rotation, but it's just a little different. And then, of course, there's reliefs in the middle for suppression. You know, you've got different relief times for EMS and for suppression. And also, by the way, EMS is also an A, B, C, and D shift as well. My apologies. I think I may have left that out. There are four shifts as well.
Got it. Okay. As a follow-up to that, Chief Savella, why do they work two different schedules? And what challenges does this present for daily staffing?
Again, these were negotiated labor agreements back in, I think, twenty fourteen, maybe. I think somewhere around that time. That was an agreement that was made by previous administrations, not only the city hall administration, but actually the fire department administration too. And it creates, especially because our suppression members are staff medic units, when there's, you know, when they have to ride a medic unit. And to be quite honest with you, it creates some issues at relief times, yes, because it creates what are called chain reaction reliefs, where this person relieves this person and moves, and people get moved around. So, but unfortunately, due to the man, the MOUs of the unions, there are certain management restrictions were held to by those MOUs, again, negotiated through contracts prior to our administration getting in there, that creates some issues with how we're able to staff units with, when it comes to reliefs and how many hours suppression people can ride on a medic unit. And, and all that comes into play, which kind of makes it quite, not difficult, because I've gotten used to it over the years, but yeah, it's, it, 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 it presents some challenges to staffing for the fire department. Yes.
Two things, Councilman. Can I, can I, first thing is I, I don't know, forgive me, forgive us, rather, forgive me in particular, if, if we didn't get our responses to the bills properly to the council, and I want to make sure that you all got the response to this bill. And if not, I want to.
We got this one.
Okay.
Yep, we got it.
And then Nina did send the both of them again earlier today. So we're good.
Yeah, thank you. Forgive us for that, too. I, Councilman, every, 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 we, we work on it, we work on a contractual basis and, and, but any, any, any changes or anything could present its, its own challenges, you know? Yeah.
No, I, I get, I get that. And Mr. Chair, if I can have another quick follow-up on this piece in particular, maybe if you maybe not be able to answer it, because I didn't realize that there was, well, I guess, now I think about it, you were not there when this was put forward. So maybe you could answer this, maybe the finance could answer. But when the fire suppression shift schedule was changed eight years ago, it was reported that it would reduce the size of the department by a hundred and fifty-six people, and that over nine years, the plan would save the city more than sixty million dollars. Has, had, has the department in that time period become more lean? And I guess for finance, has, has, has those anticipated savings come to fruition?
Yeah, I, I can, thanks, Councilman. I can speak to the financial piece. When we, when that schedule was agreed on, there was, we did phase out positions over, I believe it was a three-year period. So at the time, the thinking was that we would not have to recruit for a period of time, because as we phased out folks that were due for retirement, that we would get to that lower position level. I don't remember the exact figures on the positions. I can certainly look those up in those years, but there was a three-year phase-out position, and we did abolish those positions in the fire department budget. There was savings associated with that, so I'd have to go back and, and check my notes on, on what was originally forecast and what was achieved. But those positions that were phased out of the fire department budget, they were gone forever. They haven't come back. So, you know, the, the savings that we achieved over that phase-out period have been maintained over that, over that time period.
Got it. Okay. Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll, I'll hold off for the next round.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett. I've got a question I want to ask. So how often does the fire department hold internal fire staff meetings? And how often do you use that data to make management decisions?
Currently, what we're doing is holding executive staff meetings where we, where we evaluate every aspect of what's going on in the department, and we've included COVID at this point, including Dr. Ben Loner, our, our medical director, is involved in it now. So during, during executive session, during, during our executive meetings is when we do it, and also during our senior staff meetings, and that includes just about every member of the senior staff of the organization. But it's not consistent, and I'll readily say this, it's not consistent with what we did during city stat. It, it more or less focuses on challenges and shortcomings and trying to make corrections, or or innovative ways to try to do what we're doing. Right now, there's certain plans we're working on, trying to figure out innovative ways to resolve some of our, our long-term issues.
So if I had to describe that, it sounds like you, you meet with your senior team to problem solve. When you guys identify an issue, this is the team you pull in to problem solve.
To problem solve current contemporary issues are foreseeable issues. Case in point, when, when, when COVID came about in January of last year, we were ahead of most other organizations, I'd argue, in this area. And the reason why is because we saw it coming. We got together as, as a staff, and we reached out to our partners in Seattle, Washington. And they took time and went through every aspect of their challenges, and even told us if they could redo certain things, what they would do differently. And we got ahead of it and, and resolved. So we have, we've had the, the capacity to be able to do both. But I'd argue, quite frankly, that at a certain granular level of what city stat was, we're, we're not doing it at that level. And, and from, from, you know, I, I know you said it on city stat, and we did a lot of good things doing that, and I, I thought it was very effective.
Okay, that's good to know. My, my second question is regarding Truck Five. So Truck Five is located at East Twenty-Fifth Street, and it was ranked the, the busiest truck company in the country. Not the city, the country, with four thousand eight hundred and sixty calls for service. Do we have any data on what percentage of those calls were fire, what percentage were medical emergencies?
Yes, I think we can, I think we can pull that information. Yeah, we, we, I think we have that information on all units. And I, and I want to also advise us that, that some of the information that we may even discuss now may come out in a report that, that was initiated by then council president, now mayor, Brandon Scott. We have a report that, that should be coming out soon, from an outside agency that highlights a lot of issues, and at least evaluates a lot of issues in the department. That's what they were, they were brought to do.
Eagerly looking forward to that report. I know it could have
Us as well.
Important impacts. So do you, for, for Truck Five, do you have any insight hard data, or at least anecdotally, on some of the public health issues that are going to that truck and that response team and driving up their high calls, cost for serving?
Some of that data, I'm sure we, we can, we can pull. I'm certain of that. Some of it may not be as, 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 as clean as, as, you know, in order to pinpoint some specificity. And then we also have to be careful about what, what we release and make sure we don't step on any legal, you know, challenges that we possibly have. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I, I, that would be really helpful if you could provide that. And I, you know, I think as an acolyte of the city stat team, I'm, you know, I can't tell you how much it could be helpful in identifying issues before they become problems. So if there are, I know city H C held internal stat meetings and then also held them with the mayor's office. You guys still have, of course, the opportunity to think about your data internally and then keep yourself working as I can't tell you how helpful it could be for, for you. But with that, I will hand off any other questions from additional committee members. Councilman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief Ford, the report you were just talking about is the facets report, is that right?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
I'm really eagerly looking forward to it. You said soon. What does that mean?
I, I, I don't, I can't tell you exactly when, but I do know we, we, we did send back some corrections to them, I think, last week. So I don't, and I know we were, we were close to the final draft. I had the final draft, so I'm, I'm, I, I don't think we're far off from it. Yeah, and, and I'm hoping, I'm hoping those are last corrections personally. So.
And how do you see the facets report interacting with this study and report bill? Do you see that the result, I think, this is me personally, thinking that the, the facets data is going to feed right into what we're trying to ask in this, in this study and report, and it's helpful to have an outside, you know, agency looking into it. But are there any other sort of, because I think the facets report is supposed to, and correct me if I'm wrong, go through top, bottom, in, out of the fire department operations. Is that correct?
I can't say that. I, I can, I can, I can send you the parameters of, of what they were supposed to look at. They were supposed to, they, I know they were supposed to look at now, they were supposed to evaluate now on one. They were supposed to evaluate management and operational practices for the department, including certain aspects of shortcomings. Man, I, I hate to quote the, the parameters of it off the top of my head, because I don't want to be exact, but I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to state the interpretation that it was looking at every aspect of the department, because that's not the fact. But what I will do is I, I will send you a, a an outline of, of, of work product they were supposed to produce.
That would be wonderful. Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. Yep, thank you. That was my only question for now. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions from the committee?
I do, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Burnett, for yours.
And this may be back to Chief Savella, but I'm not sure. So back on the, the schedule, the shift schedules, since the fire EMS folks don't work standard eight-hour shifts, how is their time off calculated? You know, is one full vacation day equal to a twenty-four-hour shift, or does the employee have to use three eight-hour days to equal one twenty-four-hour shift?
Yeah, for for the fire department, because of, you know, with the workday and all that, everything is basically kind of done hour-wise now. We sort of, what, what we've had is twelve hours equals one day. So if a firefighter wants to take off a twenty-four-hour shift, they may have to use, they have to use two leave days. Now, they have, their leave is broken up three ways: vacation, personal leave, and then, of course, holidays. They get that put into their leave bank, and they get a certain amount, depending on how long they've been in the department. The personal leave are four a year. The holidays are, I think, twelve usually. And then the vacation depends on years of service. So that's how that's broken down. And then it's, everything's broken down by hour. So if the way everyone's assigned, it's called a vacation number. So if your vacation number, you know, and, and the, the system, the work schedule is number, has a number system. So if you're A one, every time A one comes up on the work schedule, you have the ability to take first-choice vacation. And that's your option. We can't stop it. It, it's yours. It's, that's what, that's what's there. That's been negotiated. So if you want to take that twenty-four-hour shift, you submit vacation requests or leave requests, and then you can have either all twenty-four, you can take a ten or fourteen. It's up to you what you want to take. If that makes sense.
Because we
Difficult.
We can certainly include copies of both MOUs. And it, 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 it specifically will show you what area to go to, to look at a time off and things like that, and work schedule.
Perfect. Yeah, I was going to ask if we could get a breakdown for fire EMS personnel each year and like accrued totals, and how all that works. So yeah, that, that info would be helpful for me. The, the follow-up I had, I do remember this coming up a couple of years ago. And I don't know if this is Chief Ford, Chief Savella, it sounds like maybe Chief Savella again. Can you explain how the department's ninety-day transitional retirement process works? And if it has any impact on operations?
Chief, you want me to take this?
I, I'm gonna let you start. We, all of us can answer most of these questions. The only reason why I keep deferring to Steve is because, I mean, Chief Savella is because the areas that you're speaking of are his air of concentration. Yeah, so Chief Savella, I'm, I'm gonna let, let me, let me talk about the complexity about, about staffing, okay? You go ahead. You go ahead and talk about the off time.
Yes, so what was written into our manual procedure is so when a, a member decides to retire, they get, they have the ability to take up to a hundred and twenty days of accrued leave if they have it in their bank prior to retirement. So that was something that was written in, again, years ago into the contracts. Again, we're, we're, we're bound to that by labor agreements. So the hundred and twenty days, and, and I just explained how it works with the twelve hours. So once they use up, if they have, they could take up to a hundred and twenty, it could be less, it could be, but it can't be more, as long as they have that accrued in their leave bank. They take those leave days, then once that's exhausted, then they go on what's called ninety-day terminal leave, which is ninety calendar days. So the hundred and twenty is, they're just like the work schedule I talked about. It's two days, you know, so they're still accumulate, they're still, those off days are still involved with that because they're using accrued leave. So once it's all broken down, more or less, if someone has the hundred and twenty days and the ninety, we're looking at anywhere to ten to eleven months. When someone comes in and says, I'm retiring, they have, they have probably between ten and eleven months of time where they'll be out on retirement leave between the retirement leave vacation and the terminal leave before they actually leave, which basically means that's a spot. Before they actually leave, which basically means that's a spot we got to backfill for that ten or eleven months.
So um, Chief, if I could just add to also. Um, the fact that while they're out those ten, eleven months, it's all vacation. If an individual decides to. Uh, decide, I don't want to retire, they can come back to work. And we have to accept it. We will have to accept them back. Well, and, and what I was gonna s-add to this is, is every, every um. I'm, I'm gonna sound like a broken record, but it's, it's just a fact, every. Um, every wo-work schedule, any component adds complexities to any system. Some more than others, and, and, and I want to make sure that we're, we're reasonable in this because I want to, we are still in, in. This is an MOU we signed. And, and um. Our, our, our labor partner signed, and we are currently in, in contract negotiations, so I want to be very careful about not. Um, discussing it much further than that.
Got it. Um, I think, that, was that two questions, Mr. Chair? Um, I'll hold off.
Uh, I think that was your first.
Okay, I can remember. Um, all right, so the second question I had, um, and I. Think this is more, this is going to be directed to uh, the office of the Fire Marshal. Um, do we have, still have someone on? In the Fire Marshal's office?
Yes.
Oh, there you go. Ready? Okay. Uh, to see there, sorry. Um. Uh, how many sworn members do you have assigned to the office of the Fire Marshal? Um, and how many current vacancies do you have in fire, fire suppression EMS combined?
I can speak in reference to the Fire Marshal's office, but I cannot speak in reference.
My, my questions are, that's a little bit, and that wasn't for you. Not for you, sorry.
Okay, I have uh, twenty, including myself and the commander, it's twenty-nine uh. Sworn members, and then we have two civilians. Assigned to the Fire Marshal's office.
Okay, um, and if you allow me one more, Mr. Chair, on this.
Yes, go ahead.
Let me, hold on, let me make sure I give you the latest numbers, Councilman.
You, you're muted, Chief Ford. Chief Ford, you're muted. We can't hear you.
Sorry about that. I'm just trying to make, are you, are you asking about the, the current vacancies and?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm, I'm getting, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm trying to do two things at once. We're dealing with some weather issues. Um, we've got mutual aid requests, so uh, my apologies, I, but yes, I do have that. Um, so our latest vacancy number was a total of uh, ninety-nine. That was the latest one we have, and I believe that was back August twenty-eighth was that number. So we had sixty-one in suppression, thirty-eight in EMS, for a vacancy rate of six-point-nine.
Got it. Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett. Uh, a-any other questions? From the committee? All right, um. Any other questions from the sponsor?
Mr. Chair, can I, can I uh, add one statement to the vacancy count?
Sure.
Okay, uh, six, six-point-nine percent um. Out of, and we have a member staff of over fifteen-hundred is, 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 is pretty decent amongst organizations our size. I know I did a, I did a um, assessment a while ago of, of metro departments throughout the country, and it ranged from zero percent to. Almost thirteen percent, but the zero percent is readily admitted that they didn't uh, follow NFPA standards. They put three people on the engine and, and, and what they did was they. They paid overtime in order to make it to the NFPA standard, so they, you know, they had zero vacancies because of that. But um, and that's, that's nationwide, but also our, our, our local partners run um. Higher vacancies than we do currently as well, so it's, it's. And, and COVID has been a challenge for us because we were running around, you know, when we were doing city stat, that was one of the things we reported out, and we still talk about it. That's one of the areas we cover, and we were running around three percent back then.
Um, I, Chief Ford, I got a question sort of tying back to the data piece. Um, yeah. I, in, in previous meetings, you've reported that upwards of eighty-five percent of departments' calls are for medical emergencies.
Yes.
With fire apparatuses so often responding to these types of emergencies, do we keep metrics on how often these units are down and out of, out of service? And even more, um, how often they're unable to respond on the first line, as first-line responders uh, for fires?
I think we, I think we could, we could um, we might be able to collate some of that information, but I, I need to. Our, in, fire departments in general set up as a network. Um, the people that are on, everybody in our department's EMS trained. To varying levels, even on the engine company, you have paramedics that respond. So um, the responsibility of those individuals are to get on the scene, stabilize the patient for the transport unit to arrive and transport the patient. That's, that's, that's common practice, and that has been our practice since we began EMS, since we began EMS transport, I know.
Sure, yeah, no, I, I appreciate that, and I think that the question is, do we know? If the, the churn that we see on our medic units are also result, because we have our, our suppression units rep-replying so often. That we also see that churn on our suppressing units, and does that churn affect our ability to respond to fires?
The um, the metaphor churn is pertaining to what?
Um, always out on the street. Um, we know.
Just run calls in general, okay?
Yeah, yeah. Or, or, or every day, as, as you may know it.
We, we haven't, we have an extraordinarily busy system. Yeah, I wish uh, Chief Matts was on the line. He could, he could, he wanted, I could tell you one of the first things he'd tell you. Per capita, we have the busiest EMS system in the country. Per capita, meaning uh, per the number of citizens we have in respects to the number of calls we have, and they rank that per thousand individuals. So we have for, uh, if you would, if you would have asked six months ago, he, he would have told you three, we were three, now we're number one. Um, so we have a very, very busy system, but there's a lot of dynamics for that as well. And that's part of what we were talking about, coming up solutions from E, from EMS standpoint. It's not just one solution that can resolve this, because um. We, we include, increased ambulance of, ambulances five years ago by almost thirty percent or around thirty percent. And, and, and the response is caught up with us, rather than us getting ahead of them, and we thought we were getting ahead. So it, I. In general, I'm saying that there are more, the, the solutions have to be. Broad in perspective.
Sure. I, I think, I, I want to, maybe I can tie it to a very particular example, the example I gave earlier with Truck Five. Um, wh-if there, you know, Truck Five has received about forty-nine-hundred calls. If eighty-five percent of those calls are for medical emergencies, how, and, you know, how, how has that affected the maintenance and downtime for Truck Five?
I understand. Okay. All right, thank you.
So yeah, if you could follow up with that information, that'd be super helpful.
I have it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, any other questions from the committee? All right, seeing no further questions, um, we have already discussed the amendments. Um. Are there any questions about the amendments? Um, if, if you want, uh, Councilman Burnett, we can. Pop them up real quick, just so folks can get eyes on them one more time before we consider a motion.
Yeah, that's fine with me. Sorry, I thought you were just popping up.
Yep. We can just get the amendments up there. All right, so these amendments as presented. Um, it. There were no issues presented uh, or brought forward by the agencies about these amendments. Any questions about the amendments before we entertain a motion?
Does the law department have an opportunity to look at them?
Uh, Councilman Ramos, I have not, but looking at them now, they are fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd like to move the amendments, Mr. Chair.
All right, moved by Burnett. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Ramos. Conway, yes. Burnett?
Yes, yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Costello?
Yes.
Glover?
Yes.
Uh, Porter may or may not be in. Porter's absent. And Ramos?
Yes.
All right, uh, the amendments are moved and have passed. Um, any closing comments from the sponsor? We're gonna go into recess, but any closing comments for the, for the sponsor, probably um, close on this bill.
Uh, I'd like to thank the department uh, for their, their responses today, um, and the good, good questions from the committee. Uh, as previously stated, I'll be meeting about both bills with the administration and uh, Chief Ford and his team. Uh, to discuss um, some of the other issues that they raised, uh, so we may have more amendments for our next hearing. Um, on, on that end, so looking forward to continued dialogue.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett. All right, this bill is in recess. I'm gonna give us two minutes in case uh, folks have to take a quick. Uh, so we'll start back up at three-thirty. All right, we're gonna uh, bring it all back together. Uh, the next bill that the committee will hear is Bill twenty-one dash zero-zero-nine-five. Labor trafficking notice requirements for the purpose of requiring certain contractors with the city of Baltimore to place a notice. Regarding the human trafficking prevention hotline in certain locations, providing that certain contractors may obtain the required human. Uh, trafficking notices from the US Department of Homeland Security's Blue Can campaign website, providing for certain penalties. And generally relating to labor trafficking notice requirements for city contractors. This bill was introduced on June eighth, twenty-twenty-one, and it was sponsored by Councilman Chris Burnett. Um, I'm gonna open the floor to comments from the sponsor. Uh, I also want to ask um. To folks to turn on their cameras uh, as a matter of transparency. And it looks like Councilman Burnett may be having some computer difficulties in a moment.
Uh, I'm, I'm here. Can you hear me at least?
Oh, yep, I can hear you. She was about to text you.
Okay.
All right, um, floor.
Okay, uh, sorry, yeah, I think the ring is starting to get to my internet connection. Um, so I'll be quick. Uh, this is a, again. Similar bill uh, to what we've done uh, around the issue of human trafficking as far as requiring both public. Uh, buildings and private uh, buildings and two pe- two pieces of previous legislation. Uh, to post information on the national human trafficking uh, hotline. Uh, the bill uh, uh, basically outlines both what should be uh. Uh, listed on these postings, uh, and in this instance, we're talking about labor trafficking, which is, which is different. Uh, labor trafficking is the recruiting, harboring, transporting, providing or obtaining people for forced or coerced labor. Uh, it is a pervasive problem, not only in Baltimore City, uh, but across the globe. And one of the things that we know will uh, occurs is that oftentimes victims may not necessarily readily identify as victims or may not know that they be victimized. Uh, and if they do, they may not necessarily know where to go to help, or to go to get help. And so the signage in this, in this instance, uh, requires postings uh, on, not only uh, in, in some, well, we actually. It's an amendment I'll talk about later, uh, that we, we don't have in front of the committee right now, uh, but as written, uh, this mainly um, targets. Uh, con- uh, um, construction sites in particular. So uh, in, in this bill, uh, contracts of excess of five thousand dollars uh, made by the Board of Estimates. Uh, would be required to uh, post. Uh, or projects approved by TIFs over ten million dollars. Uh, would need to be uh, have uh, the required posting, and the. Posting essentially is educating people on what labor trafficking is, what coercion is. Uh, where to find information on uh, human trafficking uh, resources in Maryland. Um, and then a little bit more information for the workers themselves around the um. What may qualify them or what may make them a victim, because again, their ability to articulate that they're being victimized. Uh, may not necessarily be, the word that people use, victims, and often say, I'm a victim of human trafficking, but they may know that they've experienced some abuse, or maybe their papers. Uh, if they are uh, um. A, a, you know, their, their information, whether it's driver's license or citizenship paperwork may be held uh, by the, by the worker. Or they're being forced to work in unsafe conditions, et cetera. Uh, you know, it's all written out in the bill as far as what constitutes labor trafficking. There's a phone number uh, as well, and text message line for the National Human Trafficking Hotline, and then there's guidance. Uh, in the bill around the size and location of which the signage needs to be posted, as well as. Uh, requirements that it be posted in English, Spanish, and any other language that are required by the Federal Voting Rights Act. Um, uh, for voting materials in Baltimore City. Um, uh, I think that's a good summary, Mr. Chair, um, on what the bill does and, and why it's important.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett. Uh, now the committee will hear from agency representatives. Uh, once again, please state your name uh, before you begin. We'll start with the police department.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Shannon Conway, Legislative Coordinator with BPD. Uh, we stand by our report and we have no objections to the bill.
Thank you, Shannon. Uh, next we've got the mayor's office of human services.
Hi, Katie York with the mayor's office of homeless services. Stand by our report and, and have nothing to add at this point, favorable.
Thank you, Katie. Um, next up, we've got the law department.
Hi again, uh, Mr. Chair. I apologize in advance if my uh, internet goes out. It's certainly quite stormy here. Um. The law department uh, can approve the bill with one amendment that removes lines eleven through thirteen on page four. That's where the bill attempts to add additional penalties that exceed what the charter allows the city to do. And so just to conform it with the charter, that's the recommended amendment, and other than that, we would approve it for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you, Hillary. Uh, next we've got the Department of Finance.
Hi, good afternoon. Bob Sennemy, Budget Director, uh, representing the Department of Finance. We stand by our report. Uh, we do not oppose this bill. This is um, you know, a small new requirement for, for contractors. We don't anticipate. Um, a significant cost. We also don't anticipate significant revenue that would be generated from this just because of the challenge with enforcement and inspection. So uh, we don't see a, 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 really much, if any, of a fiscal impact for the city, so do not oppose.
Thank you, Bob. Uh, next we've got the mayor's office of neighborhood safety and engagement.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Nick Wilson, Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement. Uh, we support this bill um, as co-leaders of the Human Trafficking Collaborative. We think it's very important to not only talk about um, human, human trafficking. For sexual purposes, but also for labor trafficking, so we support the increase of awareness.
Thank you, Nick. And last but not least, we have the Department of Health.
Hello, Kelly Eastman, representing the Baltimore City Health Department, and BCHD stands by our report for Council Bill twenty-one zero-zero-nine-five. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Uh, any questions from the committee or from the sponsor?
Mr. Chair, Costello?
Uh, Councilman Costello?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um. On a, on page three and line eight. Um. There's an additional quotation mark at the end of two-three-three-seven-three-three. Is that a typo?
All right, can you give us a location?
Yeah, second quotation mark around two, in front of two.
Page, page three?
Page, page three.
Line eight? There's a quotation mark.
Yeah. Yes, okay.
That's, that's type, okay. And then on
I don't think it's a typo because if you look up, it also has beginning quotations on the beginning where the what the sign requirement. I don't know if the quotations are needed, but there's the end quote and the beginning, the beginning quote and the end quote.
I don't see a beginning quote.
Line twenty-seven, I think is what she's referring to.
Line twenty-seven on page two.
Okay, okay. All right. Anyway, that was my technical comment. Appreciate you answering that. The substantive comment. Twenty-six A one applicability. Section one, Roman numeral two, the paragraph on TIF projects. I have a couple of questions for clarification. So one, we're referring to any TIF that's approved after January first of twenty twenty-one. So a TIF that has already been approved, but a tranche of bonding that has not been issued would not qualify for this. Is that correct?
As written, yeah.
Okay, so for example, PSO on the east side, none of the subsequent bonding tranches would qualify it to comply with this. Is that correct?
I don't believe so. Maybe law could jump in. These are really good questions. I don't believe as written that to be the case, but we can, we can follow up. We weren't trying to move this bill today anyway because there's some other stuff I need to work on, but we do have time.
Hillary, are you able to comment on that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at it right now. I mean, obviously, it's far better if this looks ambiguous to you to clarify whatever you want to be in there.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure that I have an opinion on what I want. I guess I'm more looking for clarification so I understand what it applies to.
As it's written right now, the project has to be approved after January one and receiving funds. So, I mean, it looks like it needs both.
Okay, that's helpful. And then when we say a TIF project or, or, well, tax increment findings, but when we say a TIF, are we referring to the use of public funds anywhere in the TIF district? Because there could be other construction that's occurring within a TIF district, like within the geographic boundaries of that district, which are not funded by the TIF on the horizontal side?
So I, I think it would then fall under number one of that, the contract size, I think would apply.
Because the so the
I think the answer to the question, I think the answer to the question is yes, that
So you're saying the size of the contract or the, or the total amount of the TIF? Or are we talking about the amount of the tranche of the TIF?
So, and again, Hillary can jump in on the more legal end of this one, but my understanding is that if it's a contract in excess of five thousand made by the Board of Estimates, in, and also within that TIF district, this would apply?
But, but the Board of Estimates doesn't approve contracts for TIF work. So like the, when the TIF is authorized, the, either the city or Medco, if designated by the state, will float the bonds. The proceeds of the bonds are transferred to the developer. Then the developer goes out and contracts to have the horizontal work completed.
Yeah, yeah, let's, let me work on that offline. I don't, I don't, yeah.
Okay, no, no, I appreciate it.
Yeah.
And then, you know, the, the last thing I would say is, my assumption is that this would apply to only the horizontal work that the TIF is authorized to fund. So specifically, and I think you, you know, you pointed at a lot of the infrastructure pieces, water, sewer, stormwater, conduit, sidewalks, street trees, bridges. You know, those streets, curbs, curb cuts, et cetera, those things, you're not talking about the vertical development. Like once that infrastructure is in place, then the, the private side development where they're building a building on top, you know, next to where these new water mains are built, for example. I would just, I would just, I'd just bring that up is, is, you know, as you're kind of thinking through this, Councilman, that's all.
Yeah, let me, let me get more, as Hillary said, if it's not clear, then we just need to make it more clear. So let me work on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Councilman Burnett. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman Costello. Any other questions from the committee? Councilman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks for bringing this bill. I know you've worked very hard on the human trafficking issue, and I really appreciate your leadership on this. Councilman, what, so the intent of the bill is to try to get anybody who does business with the city or gets contracts or TIF or any, any pieces of public money would have to comply. That's kind of what you're trying to do here, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. And then the other question I had was Mr. Sennemy said that there's going to be not much of a, you know, revenue because we're having, we would have challenges with enforcement. So I'm wondering, you know, your sort of response to that. I want to make sure that, you know, the bill, it, it seems to me pretty simple that, you know, if there's a report that the signs aren't up, then there has to be a citation and then the contractor ends up paying the citation. Is that something that you're worried about? Or maybe the, maybe, maybe a different way to put it is, we think everybody's going to comply, so it's a good thing. And so we, so I'm just trying to figure out this enforcement piece in terms of how you envision that working. And as if you think that there needs to be anything else in there. I mean, it looks plain and simple to me.
Yeah, I, I think to answer your question, Councilman, I think it's more of the former, the first thing you said. I mean, we've added a lot of regulations over the years of things that are, are, you know, supposed to be enforced, but we have, you know, limited staff that do that enforcement. So, you know, sometimes in these bills, you know, in these bills, an agency will report or will report that we think we can absorb something like that within existing resources or try to be more efficient with how we go about doing those inspections. But I just want to not just say that there are limits to that, right? I mean, if, if we're providing, you know, for somebody that wins a city contract, we would provide them notice when they go through the procurement process and say, this is a requirement. The question of being able to send somebody back to all those establishments, you know, realistically, we will have to do that within existing resources or when we go to do inspections of other, other establishments. So based on that, I'm not saying we should not do the inspections. I was just saying that we shouldn't necessarily count on additional revenue because we would hope that either people would comply. Or like I'm saying, we might not have the resources certainly to hit all of these establishments and make sure everybody's following that law. And some of these in the, in the past, and some of these types of bills in the past, I mean, we could rely on, you know, others notifying us if there's a complaint to say, hey, this is the law and please go out and inspect to make it more of a reactive, more of a proactive. That's a way to get some level of compliance if there are complaints coming from, you know, residents or citizens rather than having to send somebody to every establishment. So just want to just put some, just trying to establish a little, a dose of reality. We've added a lot of requirements for various types of inspections, including the bill we heard earlier. But there are limited resources that can only get to so many, you know, at a time. And we already have, you know, some establishments that we don't get, get to on a regular basis because of those, those resource constraints, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I guess I see enforcement in most things, the proactive side, and then there's the dial three, one, one, and there's a problem, you know, side. So, you know, I don't usually think that there's a problem when somebody is actually calling in and saying, hey, the signs aren't up, so we need to have somebody come in. So, but I, I think it's, I think it's clear in the bill that we want it, you know, both ways. So, no, I, I appreciate that. I realize that there are resource limitations, but this is a really big deal. So we do want to have, you know, enforcement.
Yeah, I mean, what we've done and some, I mean, some agencies can describe this, that, you know, some of them do, you know, approach it more from like a risk-based approach. Like they try to figure out which ones they have to get to to ensure compliance or which ones are the bigger establishments or more at risk. So, you know, how agencies do that, it varies a little bit by inspection, but that's one way we can try to get, you know, like a good enough sample of making sure the enforcement is there without having to hit every single establishment. But again, just, you know, understanding the, the resource constraints, there's always so many of these positions and, and, you know, what, what, what places they can get to.
Okay, thanks, Rob. Thanks. I appreciate that.
Sure.
I don't know if the councilman wanted to comment.
He said what I was going to say. I mean, the, the issue of just labor trafficking enforcement investigations has been discussed a couple of times in, before the council and often the issue of capacities come up around, you know, the number of investigators versus the, you know, number of construction projects happening at any given time and their ability to investigate all of them or, you know, in a quick, timely manner, just broadly speaking, has been conveyed as a challenge. And so, you know, the issue of signage in particular would just, you know, obviously be adding to that workload of, you know, having very few inspectors overall. And this issue came up when we did the human trafficking sign bill for like hotels as well was sort of a like, all right, we're going to investigate it. But obviously hoping that people either complain or that there's also just, you know, working with contractors or businesses to ensure compliance and that they're doing the right thing.
My other question was on the same line that our colleague was interested in. Line eight, page three. We've typically, haven't we typically, well, I, I don't really know how to handle this, but if that number changes, are we, do we need to do something about amending the bill? How do we, I mean, we have to have that sign, but I want to make sure that the number and the text is the right one. We would have to come back and amend it. I don't know if we need to deal with that at the moment. I had another bill, I can't remember which one, but that, that we had to just put some different language in there just based on what the, the number was going to be. You know, because it might change. But if you're confident that's not going to change, then maybe that's on the issue.
Um, I'm not, that's something I'm particularly concerned about. I mean, it's a national line that the Department of Human Services has been encouraging folks all over the country. So if they did change it, it'd have a, literally a national impact on a number of states. Because if you're at like truck stops and stuff in other jurisdictions, they have similar signage at like the restrooms and, you know, other places. So we, the whole country would have a problem if they changed it. So, you know, that was why we decided to do the national line instead of pushing towards a local line, because I think that's more likely to be an issue than, than, you know, the feds changing, changing this number, knowing that so many locals have this number posted everywhere.
Okay, thanks very much. I appreciate it. Thanks again for your leadership on this issue.
Thank you, Councilman Ramos. Any other questions from the committee? Seeing no questions. Councilman Burnett, did we have any amendments to consider at the moment? I don't believe so. I just wanted to check.
No, not yet. There is, and just to put it on the committee's radar, there's been some discussion with the Mayor's Office of Homeless Services and DGS about expanding this into homeless shelters as advocates have brought to our attention that oftentimes individuals, unhoused individuals are targeted for labor scams and other issues. And so we thought that that was, would be a good addition, but there's been some back and forth around execution of that. You know, because there's some private shelters, there's nonprofit shelters, there's city-run shelters, there's some shelters that are in partnership with the city. There's hotels that people are staying in. So we want to try and do it. We just got to get it right. And then obviously, Councilman Costello raised some, some good questions around contracting. So we'll work on those as well and come back to the committee with some, some amendments for this.
Awesome. All right, we're going to open up to public testimony. We gave the instructions in an earlier bill on how to testify. In so many words, please use the raise hand function on the bottom right hand part of your screen and we'll acknowledge you. At the moment, I don't see any public testimony. I'll give it another ten seconds. All right, and no callers either, so we have no public testimony. That's okay. We're not going to vote this bill out today, of course, as Councilman Burnett alluded to. We have a little bit more work to do on this. But appreciate you for bringing it forward, Councilman Burnett. Any closing statements before we go into recess?
No, I'm good. Looking forward to continued discussion. I do appreciate the committee's continued support for the issue of human trafficking. I forgot to mention at the beginning that, you know, I co-chair the Baltimore City Collaborative. And, you know, these legislative ideas are coming from advocates, people who are on the ground. And so I can, I think I speak for them and that they are thankful for the council's continued support for this work.
Yeah, appreciate you being a champion for it. With that, we are going to go into recess. This hearing is in recess. Thank you.